Welcome, everybody, to our City Council. Today is May 17th and the time is 7:02. We're calling our meeting to order. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, a member of, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members? Thank you. Monica, we get roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Soto. Councilmember Moran.
Present.
Councilmember King.
Present.
Mayor Protem Garcia. Mayor Aguilar.
Present.
For the record, Councilmember Soto and Mayor Protem Garcia are not in attendance, but their absence is an excuse, sorry.
Thank you, Monica. For closed session announcements, we actually moved our closed session to after a regular meeting, so we'll be conducting that afterwards. Council, any changes to agenda? I don't see any at this moment. Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, isn't that right? We don't need the litigation closed session items.
Okay, thank you.
Just real quick, Mayor.
Yeah.
This is not in regards to the consent agenda, right?
No, this is just...
Okay, thank you.
I know there, I think there'll be some items being pulled from the consent calendar for discussion or presentation, but once we get there, we could do that. So no changes to agenda. Citizen comments at this time. This section allows, this section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the City Council on any item not otherwise on the agenda. Members of the public, when recognized by myself, should come forward, identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. For items which are on the agenda this evening, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the City Council as each item is brought up for discussion. Do we have any citizen comments at this time? Anybody on the phone? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to our ward presentations and proclamations. We have one item tonight, presentation by Jamie Holt, and she's the Chief Communications Officer for San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, air quality efforts in the San Joaquin Valley. Thank you for coming tonight, appreciate it, appreciate the time.
Thank you all so much. I also want to introduce next to me here, and I'm gonna give her the microphone right at the end of my presentation, for just a minute, Councilmember Deborah Lewis from Los Banos. Councilmember Lewis is actually a member of our governing board, she's one of the five city representatives, and she has taken it kind of under her authority or responsibility to make sure that we're going out to cities, especially those in Merced County, and tell you about what we're doing, and especially about our grant programs, and how there might be funding for both things the city can do and then also things that the residents can do. So I'm gonna give her the microphone here in just a minute, but I'm gonna move forward with my presentation. We really have an unparalleled air quality problem here in the San Joaquin Valley, and it's not that we pollute more than other areas, we actually pollute less than more pristine areas such as the Bay Area or even some places nice as Lake Tahoe, but we are in this bowl. And this bowl tends to trap pollution. We, especially during the winter months when we have those stagnant conditions, the pollution gets trapped by the mountains that surround us, really has nowhere to go, and our pollution levels can increase. We also get pollution from a variety of different sources. This is that inversion layer I was talking about. During the wintertime, we have a variety of pollution sources. They might be mobile sources such as trucks, cars, locomotives, even that wood burning stove that you might have in your home, industry, ag, they're all contributing to pollution. During the wintertime especially, it gets trapped under our inversion layer and really has nowhere to go. One of the biggest challenges we have in the valley is also that we're a major transportation corridor. Most of the goods coming through the ports in California actually go through the valley, and heavy-duty trucks are our biggest pollution source in the valley. And there's a lot of work going on right now at the state level and the federal level to make sure that we're seeing the reductions from those heavy-duty trucks that are needed to come into compliance with some really tough federal guidelines. We have seen significant improvement over the last 20, 30 years. It's really a testament to the work being done by industry, residents, agencies, to make sure that we are, for better or worse, one of the most regulated areas of the United States. And we really are seeing those improvements. Some of the things that we really focus on at the air district, we really wanna make sure that we're being innovative. Some of the things that you see us doing in the Valley Air District, it's really the first place that it will be done in the United States. We've got up in Modesto, a project at a PepsiCo facility where they manufacture potato chips, where they're looking to basically zero out all of their emissions, so they're not gonna have any emissions coming off of that facility, they're gonna have electric heavy-duty trucks and chargers and solar panels and just a wide variety of ways that they're cutting-edge when it comes to the way they do business. We also work really hard to make sure that we're being innovative in the transportation sector. Mobile sources are the biggest source of emissions in the valley, that's cars and trucks. Those stationary sources for which the local Valley Air District is responsible, those stationary source emissions coming off of factories, coming off of any type of industrial facility you might have, those have been reduced by about 90%. So we're really beginning to shift and look at the transportation sector so we can get those much-needed reductions in that sector as well. And then we're doing a lot within communities to really make sure that our residents, and especially some of our historically underserved residents, are getting the tools and resources they need to make those changes so that they can be driving a cleaner vehicle, doing cleaner yard care, and I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that in just a minute. So grants for businesses and public agencies. So these are grants that the City of Livingston can take advantage of today. Excuse me. We have a clean fueling infrastructure program that basically works to get heavy-duty infrastructure, be it a CNG facility or an electric, heavy-duty electrical infrastructure project up and running, maybe it's for electric school buses to charge, maybe it's for fleet vehicles to charge. We've got a program that can help you out with that. We've got a clean green yard machine program that will help you take the landscape equipment that the city might use for parks, or maybe a school district might use, and replace that landscaping equipment with electrical. I will tell you, about seven years ago, we had a lawn care conference, and the technology, we were all kinda like, oh, the electric stuff's getting there, it's okay for maybe your personal lawn, but is it gonna be able to do, you know, a high school football field and still be running? The technology is much, much better than it used to be, and there is a lot of potential out there for those heavier, commercial-grade landscaping equipment. We've got an off-road equipment replacement program. If you have everything from, maybe it's an emergency vehicle, maybe it's a fire truck, and you wanna look at getting a cleaner fire truck in place, something like that, or any other type of kinda off-road equipment that might be out there. We've got a locomotive replacement program. We also have charge-up, electric vehicle charging infrastructure, and this is a great one. And you guys probably already have a handful of EV charging stations in Livingston, you're right on the 99. We'll basically pay almost the entire cost to put electric vehicle charging stations in. And then depending on how you wanna structure it, it might be the type of station where folks have to slide a little card and they pay for the electricity, or maybe it's at a location where you all wanna pay for the electricity. But that's a great program, 'cause it's a really high-dollar program. We can come in and replace older, heavy-duty trucks. We have a Drive Clean Electric Vehicle Rebate Program. If the city needs new fleet vehicles, maybe it's going from, you know, a Ford Taurus that's old and out of date, and you wanna get into a EV Bolt, or even a Tesla, if you wanna be crazy, which they don't allow us to get Teslas at our office, but maybe you guys do things differently. You can basically get $20,000 to swap out that vehicle. It's a really good deal, and it's up to $100,000 per agency, per year. So that's a great program, lots of money there. And then I always say Technology Advancement Program, or other state and federal pilot projects, if you have an idea, our board members wanna hear about it, and they are always looking for that innovative, new, maybe it's never been done, but it looks really good, and there's a really good story to tell for it, then we'd be happy to hear that as well. We also, you all have an agricultural community around you, we have a whole suite of grants that are specifically for ag operations, ag pump replacements, alternatives to open burning. Open burning's actually being phased out. If you see open burning in the area, there's a pretty good chance that it might be an illegal burn, and you're happy to give us a call, and we'll check it out. It's gonna be pretty much totally phased out by January 1st, 2025, and because of that, we have some very significant grant programs to assist the ag community in making that transition. We have an Electrified Dairy Feed Mixer Program, an Ag Truck Replacement Program, a Low-Dust Nut Harvester Replacement Program, a Tractor Replacement Program, and a Zero-Emission Little Ag UTV Program. Now, you have a few people in the audience, and you all are residents as well. These are three of our most popular programs, and they're really for residents. And if you want more information, you want flyers, you want mailers, you want us to reach out to the community even more, I'm happy to do that. One's called Drive Clean in the San Joaquin. It has three arms. The first is a repair component, where we come usually on a Saturday, we do it about every other Saturday, to locations up and down the valley. Cars line up at sometimes as early as 6:00 AM, and they will basically get an emissions test, and if it looks like they are gonna have trouble passing smog, we'll give them a $600 voucher for them to go and get their car repaired so they can pass smog. And that rotates up and down the valley about every other Saturday. We also have what we call Clean Car Clinics, where we'll come, usually it's to like a little local restaurant, and we'll basically take folks kinda through the same program, but they don't have to go to one of that events, one of those events. The next program, which is incredibly popular, is a replacement program. If you have a 2006 or older vehicle, we will work with you to give you $9,500 to replace that vehicle with an electric vehicle. If you wanna go with a hybrid vehicle, it's a little less, but the goal there is to get some of those older, higher polluting vehicles off the road with something cleaner. The last one, if you just wanna go out and buy an electric vehicle, there's lots of rebates out there. We have a $3,000 rebate, the state has, I believe it's a $2,000 rebate, and then you can sometimes pair those with maybe the utility company rebate or other rebates that might be out there, so you can sometimes cut a fairly significant portion of your cost of your car off. The next one, in addition to that clean green yard machine program for commercial use, we also have a program for residential use. And if you are going to turn in an older gas-powered lawnmower, we'll give you up to $250 on a new electric one. Be about 50% of the price. That's, option two is what I tell everyone, if you're gonna go buy electric yard equipment, or you're gonna go buy yard equipment, and you're willing to buy electric, we wanna nudge you over the line, you don't have to replace anything, we'll just give you a rebate. We'll give you a flat rebate, you can buy a mower, and we might give you $50. You can buy an edger, we'll give you $50. You can buy all those different things, and we'll just give you a rebate for making the choice to go electric. Lawn care products tend to be really dirty, those little engines, those little gas-powered engines that are on those products, put out of a lot of pollution, so we really want folks to begin to make that switch. And I just saw at Costco over there, really nice pieces of equipment out there. Last but not least, we've got our burn... ...airplace or stove, and we'll give you, depending on your income level and depending on where you live, up to $3,000 to replace it with a gas insert. I'll tell you, I did this personally... ...turn on with a remote, and it's fabulous. So we'll give you up to $3,000, depending on your income level for that program. Understand that just because we live in a... ...we're going to be innovative. All of this is really about improving the life and public health in the valley, and we really focus on it. We advocate at a state and federal level that more funding is coming to the valley so that we continue to run these programs, and I really have to say, I'm so proud of the work that we've done and the hard work that's been done by our governing board. We also have an app, I encourage you to download, especially when air quality's poor, when we get into the wildfire season, those summer, late summer months. Over the winter, we can tell you what air quality looks like, and feel free to reach out to us on social media or on our website. And with that, I'm gonna let Councilmember Lewis just kinda wrap us up, and then I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Jamie. First of all, I wanna thank the City of Livingston for being one of the cities to elect me to sit on this board and represent Merced County. As she indicated, it's my mission to make sure that the information gets out, especially to Merced County residents, because I think generally, we haven't really had enough information coming from the board to this county. There's so much money out there, I mean, lots of money, millions and millions of dollars. I think what, our budget this year is like $500 million. I'd like to have...
That's just our great budget.
Yeah, I'd like to have some of that for my city, just for operations. But nonetheless, with all the money out there, this is the opportunity for people to take advantage of the different programs that are offered. We had a tune-up day in Los Banos where people brought their cars into the... ...get in contact with Jamie, have your staff contact her to set up a tune-up program here. You'll be quite surprised. I think the first one that we did last year was over 125 people that showed up. In some of the bigger cities like Modesto, Fresno area, you got 400 and 500 people lining up for one day. So it's a good program, whether we agree with what's going on in our state or not, it's still a good program. I would encourage you to try to get your residents to get involved, and especially those who are in need of another car and can't afford it. These incentives that are out there, it's not just for new cars, it's for used cars as well. There are also some new grant money that just came down for school districts to replace their buses. I think they're offering them $400,000 per bus, which is about what a bus costs, so it's basically getting a free bus with charging stations. So there's just... ...any out there to help the city, to help your school district, and to help your farming community to be able to reduce the pollution that we have in our valley. So thank you for having us both here today, and I'm gonna turn it back over to Jamie.
And I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Thank you so much for the presentation and the PowerPoint. Looks like there's a lot of great opportunities out there for us to really explore. Councilmember Lewis, welcome to the City of Livingston. So yeah, thank you for the information, and you know, I wanna officially invite you and let's make an event, you know, let's bring those services and resources to our community. It'd be great to have an event like that in Livingston. So I know we will shortly be in contact with you to make something happen. So thank you so much for taking the time. Council, do you guys have any other questions or anything else?
Yes, well, first of all, thank you both for being here and taking the time to bring this information. I previously have had heard about one or two of the programs, and actually just last week, I heard about that lawnmower replacement program, and you know, I think there's also some great opportunities. And definitely, I think I will be more than willing to participate in future meetings and along with the city manager, especially in regards to, you know, like the mayor was mentioning, a couple of the programs, and one of them specifically will be the EV charging stations. As we're growing, I think we, you know, this is a good opportunity for us to think ahead and start planning for additional or for charging stations here, especially being right off the freeway. And I was wondering, would it be okay if we're able to share that presentation out on social media and, you know, I think it'll be another way to really kinda bring it out and let people know where to go, what are some of the things available, and just great opportunities, and I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Last thing I just wanted to say, and I just thought about it, perhaps if you wanna put a flag on your webpage to lead people to the website, to help them get there and be able to share this information, that might be another helpful way of doing it as well.
Yeah, absolutely, it sounds like a good idea, but no, I was nodding to our city manager about some of those programs. I know we have used, taken advantage of some of the programs, but definitely, there's a lot more that we could, you know, seek and explore. So thank you, both of you, for coming today. Any other questions at this time? Okay.
Just one more, real quick. I know that this program is, I seen a similar program through another grant, but since you're talking about replacing lawnmowers with electric ones, is there such a thing as replacing the entire lawn, that way we don't have to use the lawnmower anymore at all, and as part of your programs?
We, right now, don't have an artificial turf program, and I have seen those as well, putting in artificial turf. Some of the water agencies have done that type of thing, 'cause you don't have to water them. It's definitely something that we can take back and check with our district about, our grants team about, to see if there's funding out there. A lot of our funding comes from the state and federal government with really specific kinda, you know, hoops you have to jump through to make them work, but that's definitely something that I'm happy to take back and chat about.
That'd be great, thank you. Thank you so much for your time tonight, I appreciate the information, thank you.
Thank you all.
I'm gonna go ahead and move on to city staff announcements and reports. Vanessa, do we have anybody tonight?
Yes, Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. We have a Public Works Department report and a Recreation Report.
Thank you. We have Public Works, Tony, going up first?
Going in alphabetical order, Public Works first.
Perfect, sounds good.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Council, Vanessa. Quick update on a few of our public work projects. I know the anticipated Lucero Park Playground is really taking a turn for the worse for us, due to problems from the manufacturer, they're having parts from overseas that are being, you know, really taking a long time to land here. Approximate date right now, we're looking at like July 7th. If anything changes, we'll be notified and we'll let you guys know as well. So one of the other CDB sewer projects, still underway, they're going and digging out all the water valves, sewer valves, and everything that needs to be raised and put level, and as soon as they're done, hopefully, it's looking like maybe sometime next week, and as soon as they get done with that, they'll start with the striping, the stop bars, 25 mile an hour, and all the other signage that goes with that project. This week, we also had our solar project that has started delivering parts out at our wastewater treatment plant. They have a temporary fence being put up, like I say, they have been dropping off transformers and other parts, they'll be continuing that this week. Also, Monday, wastewater treatment plant, we had a 12-inch rupture on our sewer line out at the wastewater by oxidation, by the headworks that sends water back to the oxidation ditch. Our staff caught it early Monday, and it's a little bit large for us. This main line is about close to 12 to 15 feet deep, it's a 12-inch main. It also blew a check valve, so Conco West was asked to come out and give us a hand. They are working with our crews and our contract engineers aware. Jared, he's also aware what's going on, he was out today. So we've been working on this project for a couple of days. Because of the massive line and the depth of it, we're having to reroute our sewer, so it's being rerouted from the main sewer into, the main line sewer into, instead of going to the headworks, it's being rerouted into the oxidation ditch. Conco anticipates, maybe by the end of the week, if everything goes good, that that will be repaired. So, any questions?
Mayor, if I may share that, this is something that happened in our sewer treatment plant on Monday, so we, I've been working with Tony to take care of this emergency. Obviously, we had to get outside help, so Conco West is providing that outside help and that technical expertise and the equipment as well, because it's pretty large. So with that said, we will be bringing forward, this is something that it was, as an emergency, it's not something that was budgeted in our line item for the sewer fund, so we will be bringing an item in the future, once we know how much this emergency repair is, once it's complete, we will bring an item for council, for ratification.
Thank you, thank you for information, council. I know council has some questions. So this issue in no way affected any of the service to the residents?
Negative, it was all at the wastewater treatment plant. We contained it there, and we got emergency repairs going as soon as, by the end of the day, so it did not back up anybody.
Okay, so there was no contamination outside of the area?
Correct, correct.
Okay, all right. And I know I called you, maybe I think it was about a week and a half ago, it was during the weekend, I forgot if it was a Saturday or Sunday, in regards to a water main that broke at a residence home on, I think it was on Sixth, Seventh, or Eighth Street?
Yes, it was repaired.
It was repaired?
Yes, it was repaired, it was residence. We had a couple of issues with the new boxes, but we were able to get in there, open them up, and shut them off.
Was that, I haven't been out there, and I haven't been in touch, or they haven't called me back yet, but my understanding was that while they were doing the alley...
The meter boxes, what happened is the meter boxes have a special locking nut on there, so we had to go, and we're still in the process of getting some extra locking nuts to be able to take those valves off, off the lids, the lids. And that's one thing that actually took the longer, our on-call staff came out, he had a problem getting that nut off, he went back to the shop, got it back, got it on, and then I also called the resident after, to make sure everything was fine, and he said, yeah.
Okay, so it just has a cover and...
Correct.
It's bolted, and it was just having a hard time getting that top off, the cover off, to be able to get to the valve, that's what it was?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, thank you, and I normally don't like to call, you know, anyone unless it's...
No, we take, that's our job, you know? We take care of the community, I mean, you know, we're all on call, we have staff on call, and when they need help, I'm also available.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, just a quick questions, a couple of questions. So I know you mentioned the signing of the streets, the crosswalks, I know they've been working on that, but I know there's, you said there's gonna be still work to do, there's still a few areas that we need to target that. Another thing, like I really wanted to advocate, and I know this has come up in the past, regarding a crosswalk on Dwight and Walnut. A lot of people, especially like during the Sweet Potato Festival, park their cars along Walnut, but there's no crosswalk going into the actual sports complex. There's none at the corner, there's none, you know, along the housing development. There's none, corner, there's none, uh, you know, along the, that housing development. So I know I've brought it before. I know there's a pending project there, sidewalk project. I know that, that was expressed that it would be done at that time, but I'm really concerned. Even some, we could put something right now, um, and obviously, once the sidewalk is completed, you know, fix that, but it's just, I know people park along that way and then they cross the street and there's traffic and, and, uh, you know, just having a, a crosswalk there where cars could visibly see it better. I think it would make a difference or in regards to safety. Uh, so I, I do wanna advocate for that. We could take a look at it, see what we could do. I know, like I said, there'll be a sidewalk project being done there and probably gonna have to redo it, but, um, I think it's worth checking that out and putting something temporarily just for the safety of, of the community. And then especially with sports and stuff, people do park across the street and cross and, and there's little kids and so I think, um, it's worth taking a look at that. If you guys could please follow up with that. And I know, um, there'll be, in regards to our landscaping, I think it's coming up, Vanessa, or coming up soon?
Yes, Mayor, we are evalu, well, we put out the landscaping RFP. It was, um, due for bids to come, uh, to be turned into the city May 4th. Unfortunately, we have not received, um, enough bids or bids that, um, that conform with the requirements of the city, so we are looking at extending this, this, um, RFP and, um, getting more bids that will, that we will be able to evaluate and bring forward to council for recommendation.
And then, I don't know if it was brought up to us or not, but the street sweeper, it was delivered recently, right? Not, not long ago?
Yeah, that last presentation.
Oh, did you? Okay.
I know we had a lot of equipment, but yeah, it, it's, it's up and running.
I seen, I mean, when I went to go visit you guys, I, I was able to check it out, so.
Yeah, so it's up and running.
It looks nice. Awesome. It's working good then? Yep?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Just real quick, and I think if you can check on, right on the corner of Robin and Lilac Avenue, there's that subdivision that is, so after Lilac North is heading northbound is, is like a, has, I think it's a two lane.
Right.
But exiting off Lilac and into Robin, especially if you're turning left, that's, that turn is kind of tricky and up to a point, a little bit dangerous. And I know that probably, uh, if you get a chance, drive by and see if there's any trees or bushes that could be, that you might be able to trim to make it a little bit more safer for people that are turning left. I know it's been a while and I forgot to mention that before. Another resident just, I don't know how long ago, did they, they had a, I guess a fender bender there, but it's, it's always been kinda like on my radar and I just remember, but I don't know if there's anything that you would be able to do in regards to any trees or branches, bushes in that area?
Yes, we'll look into that.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I got a quick question, Tony. So after hours, do you guys have some kind of phone number where residents, if some kind of water breaks, who do they contact?
For us, all our on-call staff goes to the police department. So every emergency goes to the police department, then depending if it's for our operators or streets, then they'll, uh, call the person that's on call for that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Anna Hernandez.
I think somebody's just logging into the phone, but thank you so much for the information. Appreciate it.
That's our consultant.
Oh, is it?
It's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have recreation.
Good evening, everyone. It's a good day. Good city to be in. Last night, well, actually, let me start with Saturday. The pancake breakfast was off the charts. It was so fun. If you guys haven't been to a pancake breakfast, you get to see everybody that you don't ever get to see. And you're sitting around eating and just shucking and jiving. It was just really
Good times.
It was like old home week, so mark your calendar for next year and try to make it out there. Music in the Park happened last night. If you guys didn't hear it, it was really amazing. One of, well, all of the bands that are playing are locals. People that have grown up here in Livingston and they may have moved away, but still, you know, their roots are here. And it was really good. Next week, our very own Rhythm Blenders are gonna be playing. And last night, the dance floor was packed, so if you weren't able to come see it, you should come and bring your dance and shoes. It's at, uh, 6 o'clock next week and then the rest of the weeks, it starts at 7:00. The Color Run is this Saturday, and so I do have a job for all of the city council, per the mayor's request, and you guys will be herding runners. You're gonna put them in their corrals and release them when the whistle blows, so, um, I will fill in the mayor and then he can organize and conquer.
Sounds fun.
So we'd still have openings. If you feel like you want to be a part of the Color Run, you can come down to City Hall. And you can sign up. You won't get the shirt because those have already been ordered and actually are in, um, but it is for the color kit. You get everything else and a great time. So, um, if you can't even make it to City Hall, run the, the form off online and put a check in the Dropbox at City Hall and we'll take it as long as it's before Friday night. And then all of you that may be thinking about joining a service club, tomorrow night, I'm the guest speaker for the Lions Club. It'll be right here at 6:30, so come on down and, um, enjoy the evening with a bunch of great volunteers and worker bees, so. And with that.
Thank you, Jackie. Um, I have a quick question.
Sure.
I know that this was brought up before. Are we getting a banner, um, for Main Street?
I have it.
You have it? Okay.
I just gotta get it to Public Works to cut the win slots in it, but I have it.
Awesome.
Soon as I
Let's put it up. Yeah. Council, any other questions? Okay. Questions, anybody?
Actually, um, just a comment. I, I, uh, within the last few weeks, I've been getting some inquiries, you know, about everything in regards to the Centennial, uh, from surrounding communities. They're, they're, they know about it. They are planning on being here. So that means that, uh, everybody's doing a really good job about getting it out there, about the different activities in regards to the, uh, Centennial celebration. So I know that, uh, there's people in Fresno that I talked to and they're like, you know, they're like, when is this? I said, well, there's a lot of things going on, but this date is gonna be, you know, the big, the big, the big, uh, weekend. So I, I've been sharing the, uh, that calendar. So, uh, you guys are doing a great job and, and, you know, like I tell them, it's like, we only get to celebrate 100 years. Uh, we're probably not gonna be here for, uh, the next one, so might as well make it big. Thank you. Good job.
Council, any other questions for Jackie at this time? No? Okay. I'll see you on Saturday. It'll be fun. Good times. Any other staff? Oh, yes, go ahead.
Sorry. I was so excited about the successes. I forgot to tell you guys, we are short 20 volunteers for the Color Run. So if any of you out there have nothing to do, I need people to throw color on people. I need you to hose people down. It'll be really fun jobs, but I need 20 of you. So if you could call the office, 394-8830, we shall sign you up.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any other staff? Vanessa?
No other reports, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and move on to the city manager announcements and reports.
Yes, good evening. Really quick, I just wanted to share that, uh, city staff has been coordinating with the consultant for our general plan and into resuming the, uh, the general plan process as it was identified in our strategic goal session back in February. So, uh, what we're thinking is that we will be putting together a workshop. It's gonna be a general plan update 101 workshop for, for our city council. Um, we're, we're hopeful that the planning commissioners will also be able to attend and, or in the public. So that will be coming up in the next couple of, um, weeks, if not in the next month or so. On the same token, um, I just also wanted to give a quick update on, um, back in April, the council also approved the reinstitution of, um, uh, the delinquency process for our water, for our utility accounts. And along with that, there, we were tasked, our, our city staff was tasked to look at other venues in which we can provide some relief to our, um, utility customers. So, um, our finance team was able to secure from the State Water Resources Control Board, $24,000 to provide relief to the sewer, um, accounts for, um, the outstanding or the, um, the, the delinquent, um, accounts that we had up until the time in which we submitted this application. So, according to the state guidelines, we have 60 days to provide, um, allocation of this, uh, fund. So we will be working on, um, setting an allocation that it's equitable among all of the, um, residents and, um, and, and the accounts that were submitted for this program. I can share with you that, um, at the time of this application, 69 of our, um, residential accounts will be provided some sort of relief for their, um, delinquent, um, or the, um, outstanding invoices on the sewer side. So, um, that was very, um, very great news that we received. We are also continuing to look into other programs to provide further relief to those, um, customers with, um, with, with, with serious delinquent, um, accounts. And we will be providing an update to council once we receive more guidance from the state.
Sounds good. That's good news. Um, Council, questions?
Vanessa, um, that's great to hear. Is that for residents to participate, is that automatic, automatically done by the city or do they still have to apply and, and qualify and all that? Or is that a, a, automatic?
At the time when we submitted this application, which was back in April, um, we had to provide supporting documentation, so it is going to be, the relief is going to be allocated with the residential account numbers that we provided to the state. So, and, and they will be tracking on, on that, um, that it matches what we submitted on the application as well. So, there's no need for our residents to provide any kind of, um, requests to be applied. We will be doing that on our side. And they will be getting a notice because it's part of the, um, state water resources, um, requirements that we provide notice to our customers and we have a 60-day window to do that. So we'll be working on that and kudos to my finance team that they, they're working on this and pushing very hard to get it completed, uh, by the timeline.
Any other questions for Vanessa? Council? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to city council member announcements and reports. Councilmember King?
I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Justin Moran?
Yes, um, this last month has been quite busy. In late, uh, April, I had an opportunity to attend a Latino elected officials conference, uh, and it was mostly related. There was a lot of information on how to be better prepare as a city. Um, and, uh, you know, before the pandemic, we never really had, many cities were not even thinking about, you know, what to do in certain situations because we never thought about a pandemic. Other municipalities have thought about, you know, how to evacuate, especially if they're near, uh, oh, the water or near where there's a high fire risk and stuff like that. Uh, but there's a lot of, uh, great resources out there that, uh, for cities like us and to be, uh, better prepared. And so there was definitely, um, a lot to be learned that was shared by either, by other elected officials of what has worked and what has not worked. Also, and on, um, on the 7th, actually, we had, we were able to participate in the A-Band Review for the city of Livingston. It was, it was the first time probably in over 25 or 30 years that, since we had a band review. And along with that, um, the CD, Public Works, PD, everyone, recreation, everyone, every department, I believe, was involved and somehow assisting, supporting that event and, and, um, everything went very well. Everything, well, for the most part, went very smooth, considering it was the first time in, that this has been done again. We had a lot of, um, visitors from out of town, which is great. They were able to come to Livingston and, uh, so, um, thank you to everyone that was involved in one way or another to make this happen. I also had an, I was invited to do a presentation in regards to how cities work and how elected officials are able to participate and partake in, in, um, in getting things done in their respective, uh, communities. And this was for, uh, a parent leader training institute for Merced County residents. Also, uh, as Jackie already reported, I'm also the liaison to the Recreation Commission. And I attended a meeting on the 28th of April. April 30th. Oh, okay, so that weekend from April, Saturday, April 30th and May 1st on Sunday, I was around the county, recruiting vendors for our, um, Sweet Potato Festival. So there were some that I liked and I, you know, gave, uh, the Recreations Department information. Some that like, you know, um, they were either coming from too far and stuff like that, but I still provided information on, 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 on our events that we have here and hopefully they'll have an opportunity to participate and also learn more about Livingston and all the great things that we have here. So Jackie, I'm, I'm sure you, you'll be, you will be getting, if not yet, some new vendors from outside the area. And, uh, on May 4th, I had, uh, the opportunity to participate and attend the Police Officer and Dispatch, Officer of the Year Award in, in Merced. It was great. You know, it was great to be able to see and hear from, uh, from the officers and the awardees themselves, some of their experiences and, and, and the reason that they were selected as, um, Officers of the Year. And, and it was just great to see everyone there. So, um, and I, I really enjoyed the dinner and, and the company of, uh, members from the Police Department and, um, and, um, a lot of other officials from other cities were there too, so. And on May 5th, Thursday, there was a Cinco de Mayo celebration at the high school. And that is something that has been taking place every year, every year, every year. And I don't know if you've been to the, uh, old gym at the high school. Both sides of the bleachers were full. I mean, to the point where, uh, it's a good thing that we did not have, uh, no fire department there, because otherwise they would probably shut it down because there was people at the entrances and just, 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 there was no more space. So, uh, it, it was pretty full. And it was great to see, uh, a lot of members from the community being present and participating, uh, at that event. And, um, yesterday was great to be there at the Music Memorial. And it, it looks like it's gonna be a, a great summer on Mondays and, and, uh, Tuesday, uh, especially after, I think it's at the end of the month, uh, that is gonna take on Tu, uh, take place on Tuesday. So, but other than that, it's gonna take place on every, on every Monday. So everyone out there, make sure you, uh, save those dates and put it on your calendar. Music Memorial, every Monday. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Maria Soto?
I don't believe I have anything to report, but just an announcement for Memorial Day. There will be a, um, honoring for our memorial services for our, uh, service members. There will be a honoring for memorial services for our service members at Memorial Park at 5:00 PM. So also mark your calendars for that. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're gonna go ahead and move on to mayor announcements and reports. I have a few things. After another round of COVID, I was able to make it to the MCAG One Voice Trip in Washington, DC. It's annual trip, advocacy trip from the county and jurisdictions in the county from each city. I was able to represent Livingston along with our city manager Vanessa. We met with different federal agencies such as FEMA. We also got an opportunity to meet staff from our senators, our Senator Alex Padilla. So it was a great opportunity to advocate for the needs of the town and the, and the county as a whole. Our platform specific to Livingston was our, our needs with water, not only infrastructure, but quality. So we were able to advocate at that level. Another item we advocated for was the platform for our ACE train and, and transportation hub that we're calling it. So it was, you know, productive. It's always good to have a seat at the table and represent the city and, and those type of trips and those kind of, you know, as a group as a whole, as a county. So there was a whole lot of other items that county and other jurisdictions brought forward. So it was very productive. I want to acknowledge that our Assistant Chief, David Bates, is here. And as you guys heard, we had our pancake breakfast this past weekend, very successful. You know, we appreciate the support from the community every year that we have it. It's good times. Everybody comes out, you know, excellent breakfast. The guys at the station, you know, everybody puts in work the day of the event, but it takes a lot to organize it, sell tickets, promote it. So, you know, thanks to the fire department, our guys, and thanks to the community that came out and supported this event once again. The proceeds, you know, are used towards much-needed fire equipment and medical equipment. So, so thank you to the community and everybody that was there. Jackie, thank you for showing up. Appreciate it, guys. You know, this weekend, this busy weekend, attended the baseball fundraiser, the high school baseball team's fundraiser, the fifty-one fifty fight night. Also had attended the band review, attended the music in the park yesterday. And we had another community event on Sunday where I was able to work with the United Farm Workers Union, the United Farm Workers Foundation. This event was geared towards, you know, our farm workers. They were able to provide them with PPE, much-needed, you know, mask, hand sanitizers, and resources. And we were able to feed, you know, a lot of people. We were provided, we provided six hundred free tacos to the community. So a lot of people came out, it was good. You know, we'll continue working with the foundation, United Farm Workers Foundation. They write a lot of, bring up, bring a lot of resources to community, especially our farm workers. They've been doing great work this past year, working together with them. They actually go out to the fields and visit the people. They're also touching bases with a lot of the churches. So, you know, they're doing great, great work. So I think that work is very important. Some of the things I've been working on with Jackie, I know we're gonna really get into this, I've been reaching out to some of the schools for a time capsule project for our centennial celebration. So we're working on that, trying to get items from the schools to be included in the time capsule. So it's very exciting. I think it was pretty neat and we'll be able to open it in fifty or a hundred years and see what, what kind of stuff we had back in the day. So I'll be reaching out to some other departments to see what they want to include in there. I am working on the street renaming project. We're gonna bring, I'll bring to council that item later. Working on other community events during the summer, we'll announce a few events here pretty soon. Also working on a sister city project with a city in Mexico, specifically Churincho. I did reach out to Alejandro Pimentel, which is a president municipal from over there. So looking forward to, to making that relationship. There's a lot of people from that region that migrated here many years ago, first, second, third generation. So it'll be neat to have that, you know, ongoing relationship. And congratulations to Corporal Villarreal for the Officer of the Year. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it. I was in Washington, DC. But I am taking him out to lunch here pretty soon to congratulate him. And I believe that is all for me. We're gonna go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine or non-controversial and will be enacted to one vote unless separate action is requested by the city manager or city council member. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or city manager request that specific item be removed. Counsel, is there any items you guys would like to discuss? For myself, I'll go ahead and identify, identify item number ten to be taken out for discussion or presentation on it. Any other items?
That was the same item that I wanted it to.
Okay, perfect. So we'll tackle the consent calendar or agenda first. Counsel, what are any motions?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jose Moran. Do we have a second? We don't have any motion to, a second? Okay, we have a second by Councilmember King. Monica?
Motion approved by a vote of four zero.
Thank you. So we're gonna go and, go ahead and discuss item number ten, which is adopt their solution approving memorandum of understanding with Merced Union High School District, MUHSD, real solution approving memorandum of understanding, MOU, between the Merced Union High School District and the City of Livingston for School Resource Officer Program and authorize the city manager to execute, execute the agreement. Vanessa?
Are any questions, counsel, on this item?
Counsel, any specific questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So would we, would we be hiring a new officer just for this position or will we just transfer somebody from our department that way?
This position, it's not hiring any, any new officers. We have, we will be redirecting one of our hired or in-budgeted, part-time reserves to this, to cover for, and to provide services for the School Resource Officer Program.
Yes, so my question was around, so this contract or this MOU is for four years? In the past, has it been four years or two or three?
This MOU is for five years. So if you look at it, it's twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, four years. In the past, I, I believe what happened with the school is that they were trying to, to get, to get a School Resource Officer as soon as this fiscal year. However, when we first went on in this round of negotiation and when the MOU was first presented, it was, it became a budget constraint to, or like, it, it was draining our budget. So we had to go back to the negotiating table. Thankfully, our interim chief Hale was able to procure better terms in this MOU. So we are going through the twenty-twenty-six school year.
Okay, and, and so the other thing is the fiscal impact. And, and right now, it's based on the amount of a hundred and four thousand ninety-seven dollars and forty-nine cents. Considering that this is for four years, if that impact changes for us, can we go back and, and let them know that it's, that we need to reconsider or look at negotiations? If, you know, because right now, this is considering a part-time reserves officer. That person might leave and then we have to put in a, you know, not a reserve and then some of the actual costs might change for us. What can we, what's?
So the agreement, it's drafted, to my understanding, the agreement, it's drafted. So we have the flexibility and we have the flexibility to continue the, you know, like redirecting part-time officers to this position. So at any event, if we are, if, if the, if, if the, if the part-time officer gets a new job or moves out of town, we, it is up to the city to redirect somebody else. And at that point, we will be looking at redirecting another part-time reserve position that it will not become a drain to the city general fund. And so, and we could also stay within that, that one hundred and four thousand dollar commitment from, from the school. So the, the goal is for us not to, to provide the services to work in partnership with the school, but at the same time, be able to be self-sufficient with this program.
Okay, and, and the four-year option, was that our preference, their preference that you know of?
That was their, their draft at the beginning. So we're honoring their draft, knowing that we have already changed quite, quite a few terms on this agreement with them.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
Any other questions, counsel, at this time? At this, I think the, if I heard correctly, the concern is that not only if there's, the officer leaves or needs to be replaced or send somebody in there, but obviously the costs or the wages, the cost of having an officer there increase over time. And I think that's what are the questions that if, obviously, the cost to have an officer is more, you know, in two years, three years, four years, and it's going to cost more to have somebody there, do we have the opportunity to negotiate higher, higher contract or is just, that's where it's at?
Absolutely. And I, I will say before, I believe Chief Hale has joined us on the phone, but I will say that, you know, like, along with the cost and the, and the reason why it was negotiated or Chief Hale negotiated this contract to be flexible enough for our city to provide a reserve part-time officer to the school is, it's, it's to minimize that burden of, you know, incurring overtime costs. Because once we have this part-time, the, the school has the flexibility to work with the school officer that it's assigned to this program to, to draft a schedule that fits the needs of the school. So as far as extra cost, the contract, it's supposed, it's, it's meant to be self-sufficient and it's meant to be, to be, to be able to provide the flexibility to the school and to the city to provide the coverage without incurring any outside cost that, that, that you have brought up, such as overtime or, or anything else.
Okay. Was this?
Mayor and counsel, I am on the phone. If I could jump in?
Thank you. Thank you, chief. You mentioned something, this, so the, there was a prior agreement or something that was discussed with the previous police chiefs, is that's correct? We were able to go back and renegotiate, is that correct?
That is correct. The terms that were first presented, it was presented with the city committing a full-time officer, which really created a somewhat of a disadvantage to our budget. Our full-time officer, you're looking at somebody at the highest step of the salary scale with full benefits and pension and, and, and insurance and, and all this extra cost for a, an officer. We were looking at about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And this MOU, the MOU is committing a hundred and four thousand. So that's, that's when we were in the negotiating rounds with the Merced Union High School District. And, and we are very glad and very happy to be able to present this to council, that it's something that we feel that meets the needs and, and promotes that collaboration with, with Merced Union High School District. And also it, it's advantageous for, for our city because we're not, we're not, we're not putting a drain on our budget, we're actually bringing a hundred and four thousand dollars of extra revenue.
Thank you. Yeah, that was obviously a concern that, you know, we were putting a full-time person and we're, you know, short that amount.
Mayor, I could just add real quick, first off, I apologize, not being there, I had a medical procedure done today. But there is an understanding and it's actually written in the agreement where the principal at the high school will control the scheduling for that part-time officer. And they know when that hundred and four thousand dollars and, and change runs out, they're done, if that makes sense. So for instance, on Friday nights when there's a football game, they're going to adjust that schedule to accommodate regular scheduling. So it doesn't incur overtime and things like that. Again, like Vanessa said, they're providing a hundred and four thousand dollars and that's the budget that they have to work with, with scheduling this officer. And in turn, we get that partnership with the school.
Awesome, thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm glad that we're able to understand or that we were able to put a, a part-time officer there. So I'm glad we were able to get back on the table and, and have further discussions. Thank you. Any other questions by counsel?
So to be clear, two point three here where it says not to exceed, and it's based on having a full-time, working overtime, full-time benefits. It's not written that way?
No, this is, two point three is not to exceed a hundred and four thousand dollars. And the commitment is that we are providing a part-time officer with no benefits. So it is advantageous to, for the city to have that arrangement with, with the, with the school district because that actually provides flexibility and it's advantageous to our general fund.
Sounds good. No, absolutely. I mean, it's a good partnership and obviously it's beneficial for the high school to have one of our officers there on duty. So any other questions or clarifications? We'll take it out to public for any, any comment, public comment on this item? Okay, we'll bring it back. Anybody on the phone? All right, we'll bring it back to counsel for any motions or direction. Any motions?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Councilmember King. Do we have a second? I'll go ahead and second it myself. Monica?
I'm missing a vote.
Do you have any other questions?
Motion approved by a vote of three and one abstaining.
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and move on to discussion and potential action items. We have, so we have our Parks, Recs, and Arts Commission vacancies we'll be talking about tonight. We have three items associated to that. We have item number eleven, conduct interviews with applicants for the Parks, Recs, and Arts Commission vacancies. We have item number twelve, council discussion, applicant pool, credential qualifications, and item number thirteen, which is appoint the four volunteer regular commissioners and one volunteer alternate commissioner for our four-year appointment to the Parks, Recs, and Arts Commission. We did conduct some interviews last week of applicants for our Recreation Commission. I know there's I know there's an applicant here tonight that wasn't able to attend last week, so we'll give you an opportunity to, if Council wants to ask questions or at this time, since we do have the item on the agenda, to conduct interviews of applicants. Gerardo, you want to come up? Quick.
Says please introduce yourself, I'm headed out of the Aguilar.
So I, I, I just wanted to give you a heads up, so if you want to read it real quick, but I'm going to do a quicker introduction like I did last week. So, so as you know, you're applying for a non-paid volunteer position with the Recreation Commission, so the, the position is collaborate with the commission in a professional and courteous manner, attend the meetings, which is held, they're held on the fourth Thursday of every month at 6:00 PM. I mean, they have a lot of events, so attend or partake in some of the commission-sponsored events, which, part of the responsibilities is to make recommendations to the City Council and regarding the Recreation Department and assist park and recs programming ideas, fundraising and policy development. If selected, you will serve a four-year term, making your appointment effective through January 30th of 2026. Are you willing to take this commitment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then we're going to continue on with the interview. So the first question, please introduce yourself and tell us why you would be, why do you want to be part of the commission?
My name is Gerardo Aguilar, I'm a union carpenter, and I've been coaching youth football for, I believe, three to four years, and I also coach baseball. And I'm currently involved with the ATV park, and it's for the children, so they could have something else besides ball sports. And I'm, you know, I, I am, I wasn't born here, I mean, I wasn't, I didn't grow up here, but I moved here and all my relatives and all my family lives here as well, so I have deep roots in this community.
Thank you, sir. We'll go to question number two, describe the strengths or experiences you possess that will help advance the commission's goals and mission.
Well, having three kids and having them go through sports, teaching them, you know, the value of being a good sportsman, being a, having good character, you know, having good ideas and sharing the good ideas with other, other kids and helping, helping the youth, you know, get better at, at certain sports and, and, what can I say? And just helping in general the youth to, to, to do other things that normally they wouldn't get a chance to do.
Thank you, we're going to go ahead and move on to question number three, please share some of the ways you will provide support to the commission.
Well, I'll be providing my time and having good ideas and then how, basically just providing my, my time and, and my, my know-how of sports, baseball, football, ATV sports, basketball, I mean, I got it.
Thank you, and that, just like last week, I gave the opportunity to Council, make any comments or questions, follow-up questions, anybody? Okay, thank you, sir, for your time.
Thank you.
I think everybody else participated in the interview.
Mayor, for the record, the second applicant, Candace Agler, was unable to attend.
Okay, thank you so much. So we're going to, so I think everybody else that was interested was able to participate in the interviews. So we'll go to item number 12, which is Council discussion of applicant pool, credentials and qualifications. And just to check with the attorney's office, this needs to be conducted out here, right, in the public, in the public setting? So I know there's several applicants, we went through several interviews, just so the public is aware of the process, we were given, obviously, the questions, we asked everybody the same questions. We were given a, a tool to be able to kind of give points or grade the applicants based on their responses and their application, related to their ability to, to help out with the commission and, and partake in their mission and their goals. So we were able to, like I said, use that tool to help, help us, guide us to, to appoint, to appoint those applicants. Does Council want to specifically discuss or any follow-up questions for the applicants? Anything else?
Are all the applications that were submitted to us, are those applicants still vying for a position on the commission?
Monica, I know you reached out to some.
Yes, I did reach out to all 11 of them, a few of them weren't unable to make it to the meet, the previous meeting and this meeting, so.
Did anybody that we know of rescind their application? Did anybody that, of the 11, did they change their mind or, or were you unable to get a hold of?
No, no, when I called them, there were two that weren't able to attend, so they withdrew their application and the rest were unable to, to attend. It was, let me look at it.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I may, we contacted all of the applicants and explained that part of the process is, it was going to, we were going to have this open session with the interview and they were all given time slots. I believe we had participation from, or, or nods to participate in the interview process from most of the applicants, with a few that Monica may, may have on record that they may have changed their mind or have not been able to make it, but as far as process, we drafted the, the questions, so it can be uniform to everyone. We provided this interview process, so it's a platform that it is, that it, that it's consistent for, for all of the applicants and, and the applications or the applicants that did not attend, they're deemed being, not, not forfeiting their, their chance for consideration.
Thank you. So yes, definitely, we want to make it as fair as possible and give them an opportunity to, you know, answer some of the questions, go through an interview process. Obviously, we're still working on a more concrete process moving forward, but we, we understand people, it's been, the need is there and we need to appoint people, so that's why we wanted to just, you know, get it, get it going and get it done. If there's no discussion.
Vanessa, can you please repeat what your last statement?
The applicants were notified that this was part of the process, to have something consistent, have an interview process for everyone, we drafted that, and if they were unable to attend, they would forfeit the consideration to be, for appointment.
Did you say forfeit?
Yes.
So if they were, are not in attendance, either the prior interview process or tonight's interview process, their application?
If they did not want to do the interview process, that's, they could not, I mean, like if they're not present today, but they did the interview, that was part of the consideration for appointment.
So if they did not attend, their application is forfeited?
That's correct.
We are not able to discuss their application as part of the process of appointment?
They did not participate in the process of the interview?
How many of the applicants were notified and actually told you that they would be, I mean, would be here, that did get the notice to, the invite to come to Council?
All of them were notified. All of them were notified, I was not able to get a hold of Jaime, what's his name?
DeFoye?
No, sorry, it's.
What's that?
James, James Mejia, that's, I called him several times and I left him a message, giving him an opportunity to attend the previous meeting and this meeting, and everyone else was informed and given both opportunities from the last meeting and this meeting.
Perfect, okay, this time.
I have a question for legal.
Okay, go ahead.
Let's say if somebody didn't show up, can we still nominate them?
You don't have a formal process right now, so you could appoint, yes, theoretically you could.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and bring it up to the public, comments, anybody want to say any words or even the applicants want to say anything else? No? Okay, we'll bring it back to Council. If there's no further discussion, we're going to go ahead and move on to item number 13, which is appoint the four volunteer regular commissioners and one alternate commissioner. For this, you know, the, so, I mean, obviously, we know who participated in the interviews, who came in and, and were able to, you know, Council was able to ask some questions, I think all of us reviewed the applications. So I don't know if we want to make a motion, one at a time, or tackle the alternate first?
Yeah, so before, I just wanted to mention a couple of things. One, based on, if I remember correctly, based on our, on our, one of our, our previous meetings when this was discussed on, on, on the procedure, it was, if I, if I'm correct, if I remember correctly, it was this Council's recommendation and direction to be able to come up with a system that would be equitable for anyone that was applying. And part of those recommendations and that process was being present. So if, to me, if that is not followed, then it seems like there was, should have been no reason to give direction at all and just, you know, not have anything, any guidance and just do, and, and then just waited until now, you know, so that's just my observation. And two, you know, it's, 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 it's good to see a lot of applicants willing to participate and it's good. It's good to be able to have different points of view, different backgrounds, because that's what makes any committee unique. And if this is only one of many opportunities, there's plenty of more opportunities to participate. And even whoever, for those that, you know, obviously with many applicants, I, I believe it's only five, four, and then one, four positions, right, Jackie? And then one alternate, okay, so then it's only five. So I still encourage everyone else that applied and everyone else to still continue to participate, even though they don't become part of, of the commission, because I think, you know, a lot of times, the commissioners, not necessarily they always have all the ideas, and sometimes the new ideas come from people, from the residents or the people that are attending those meetings, so I encourage everyone to continue participating, not, not, not just up, being up here. So considering their skills and information on the applications, I move to approve, to consider for approval, or should we approve one at a time?
I think it'd be easier, I mean, I think it's, because obviously we all heard, we have different tools, different ratings, the way we saw things, I think it'd be probably more going to, Jackie?
I just have a question.
Yes.
To discuss prior about you guys going into your chambers for discussion about people, was that like illegal or something?
No, we can't. Yeah, we, we can't go in, we can't go, we can't go back there, we, it has to be done in a public setting. Is that correct, legal? Yeah, so, so we, we can't do that, but we've got an opportunity to use our tool and I think it'd be, I think it'd be probably better just some, you know, point or one by one, I would say, probably be better that way, at least I would see it. I know it's, you know, it's difficult, I think, just going back to your comment, Councilmember Moran, to my understanding, same thing, I think it's, it's important that whoever's interested, go through a process, which include an interview. I know it's sometimes hard, it's short notices, people have different things going on and sched, you know, scheduling and, you know, life and everything else, but I think it's, it was part of the process, so we have to respect that, whoever was able to make it, participate and, and come to the interview on one of these two opportunities. So I, I really believe that's part of the process and we should respect that. And then, but yeah, I think it should be one at a time and I'll, I'll get it started, I think, I'll make a motion to appoint Christine Fernandez as for one of the regular commissioners.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by myself and a second by Councilmember Jose Moran.
Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four, zero.
So for the second position or for another position, I move to approve Sukie, I'm sorry, the last name.
Joel.
Joel, yes, for a.
For the one, the permanent position?
Uh, yes.
I mean, the regular position.
Yes, for the regular position.
So we have a motion?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilmember Maria Soto.
Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four, zero.
Maria, Maria want to make some?
Go ahead, or?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
For Gerardo Aguilar, for the four-year term.
So we have a motion by Councilmember King for Gerardo Aguilar, you said?
Yes.
I'll second that.
We have a second by Councilmember Maria Soto.
Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Councilmember Moran?
Abstain.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Garcia? I'm sorry, who? Oh, sorry, Mayor Aguilar, sorry.
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of three, zero.
Next, I move to approve Hilda to the next four-year position.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Jose Moran for Hilda Lopez. I'll go ahead and second it.
Councilmember Soto?
No.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Can, can you repeat the name, who was this motion for?
Hilda.
Who?
Hilda Lopez.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the name.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of three, zero.
Three, one.
Three, one, sorry, three, one.
And then I'll make a motion for the alternate for Omar Herrera.
I'll second.
Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four, zero.
Thank you, and I just want to repeat what I've said before, this is just one opportunity to get involved, there's many opportunities, there'll be even more opportunities moving forward. There's many opportunities, there'll be even more opportunities moving forward. We appreciate everybody that applied and took an interest in becoming more involved in your city and your community. So we really appreciate that. And we commend you for taking that step. There's always opportunities to get involved and participate. And even with the Recreation Department, you don't have to be a part of the commission to be involved and, and partake in everything that we're doing. So I encourage you to keep on, on volunteering, participating because it's needed. You know, it's a small town, we operate a lot with volunteers and, and people that are willing to give the time to the community and the kids. So, you know, the Recommission is very special to me. I was legs on for a long time and initially brought it forward to establish it once more. So I've been doing great, great work throughout the years and I look forward to seeing what else the commission could accomplish together with the community and the council. So congratulations to everybody that was appointed tonight. Are we gonna have a formal, like, swearing? Do we do that with the recreation? We should, right? We do a swearing for Recommissioners? No? You wanna do it? We should totally do it. So we'll do it here pretty soon, either, most likely the next council meeting.
We normally don't do it-
No?
-for commissioners, but we can bring them forward in our next meeting-
Okay.
-and present our new recreation commissioners-
Okay. Yes.
-for everyone.
Let's do that.
And I know that Jackie will be having, will be contacting each one of the newly appointed commissioners to provide some onboarding-
Orientation.
-information. So you, you guys will all get, I'm sure you already know everything that's going on with the city, but you'll get to know the department, the mission, and the expectations of the commission in a lot more detail.
Excellent. So congratulations once again. We're gonna move on to item number 14. Item number 14, discussion and direction regarding fireworks show funding.
Yes. Mayor, we have a request to bring back after pandemic for two years. This Fourth of July fireworks showed has been, has been shut down. And now that we are looking at getting back to a little bit more normalcy from pre-pandemic or like to what pre-pandemic levels in, in actions and, and in, in programs, we would like to, staff would like to get direction on a fire, fireworks show for the city. We don't have this item budgeted in the, in our current 21, 22 budget. So if we are looking at anything, we would be, do, we will be bringing forward with your direction, a budget amendment and, and would potentially be using of general fund reserves. So I, I'm seeking direction and, and we provide this for, for discussion.
Thank you. I know this is something that's constantly and regularly asked on the community if we're, we're having a fireworks show and a lot of people are wanting a fireworks show. I know it's, I know it's a lot of work and I believe we're not looking at a full-on festival with vendors and, and, you know, a carnival or anything like that. I think people are just wanting a fireworks show, for everybody to be able to do their own barbecue and, you know, hang out with their families and then enjoy the fireworks display show. So yeah, that's one of the, you know, one of the things that is amassed on the regular, ongoing basis, text messages, calls, in person. I know Maria, you might have, might have more information about, obviously you worked with the Fourth of July Committee and that's something that you guys worked towards, I mean, you guys, you know, you participated specifically with that organization too. You guys organized the Fourth of July Festival. So I know I've touched bases with you about that. Do you have any information if there's even a possibility of having somebody come out to do actual display?
At this point, the answer is yes.
Perfect. So, you know, I wanted to bring it to council to have that discussion, if that's something we wanted to do. I know in the past, we supplemented the Fourth of July Committee with funds towards the show. And we're, we're not asking for, you know, 50,000 or anything like that. I know in the past, we've done, like, we, we used to, you know, promote saying that it's the biggest show in the valley or whatever. I don't think we're asking for anything like that. But at least something for the public, for the people to enjoy. Especially after a couple of rough years where everything was locked down and, you know, there was, we didn't have anything going on. I think it'd be a good way to, to bring people out and celebrate and, you know, obviously the restrictions have been lifted, a lot of restrictions. But I think it'd be a good thing for the community, just bring everybody together and celebrate and have a good Fourth of July and keep our people in town, you know, barbecuing, buying food here and instead of going out. So I don't know what the council thinks, the rest of the council, would, would support something like this.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mayor. We've always had the best show and last few years due to COVID, we weren't able to have it. So definitely we need one this year.
Especially being our centennial year, I think it's important also. I know we're gonna have our big centennial celebration in September and all that, but I think this is also important for the community. Any other comments by council or any?
So just for clarification, is this, okay, so what is the budget? Is there like a rough idea on the budget? Two, last year when we were working on the budget, there was, I think there was only, there was only left like $2,300. Obviously, this was not budgeted for. If it was not budgeted, it was because we didn't have any extra funds. We only had $2,000 left. Two, who's gonna like be in charge of organizing it, putting it together? Is that gonna be city staff? Which department or who will be responsible to make it work? And, you know, so, but other than that, I think, do we have a rough idea on the budget or, or, you know? In the past, this has been more or less led by the Fourth of July Committee, which was totally separate from, from the city. And whether or not in the past, the city has had, supported with some of the expenses after the event, I think I wanna take that separately and not consider like, you know, we did pay for it before or we, we, or the city assisted it in some of the funding. And was there an intent or an interest from the Fourth of July Committee at all this year to put it together? So right now, those are just some of my questions.
Absolutely, I know. I think, obviously with the, with the last budget, I think the situation is now different. I think we're in a much better financial situation.
We have, during the last budget, we had every position filled. So without having a police chief, public service director, human resource, and a finance director, I think we should have more than 2,000 in our funds.
Yes, I think we're in a better financial situation than that.
Correct. And those are, those are all good questions and comments. I am looking for direction. And you're correct, Councilmember Moran, it is something that it was not put in the budget. And even though we have, we have budgeted expenditures to pay for salaries for positions that may be vacant at the moment, we don't have the line item for this event. So that's when, when I, when I shared earlier is that once I get direction, we will bring an item back to the council so then we can approve that dollar amount. And in the event that we don't have any kind of savings other, in, in other pockets of the city, we would be, we would be using or I will be tapping into our general fund reserves. So with that, I will also like to know what, what is a threshold that the council may feel comfortable with for, for, for the city to enter or entertain an agreement for fireworks show? Is it, is it a $15,000 threshold? I'm hearing that 50,000, it's, it's, it's not the show that you are looking for. So, I mean, like, it's gotta be somewhere in the middle. And I would, I would like to get direction from, from all of you to have that, that, that kind of idea of what I will be, I'll be, I will be bringing back to the council that you will feel comfortable securing funding for, for this event. And I think that, you know, it is true, in the past, the Fourth of July Committee has put this, this, this program in, in, in place on behalf of the, the community. And the city has provided a, a, a level of support that kind of said, you know, you're going to try to get sponsorships or try to fundraise and anything that, that, that you are, that you are in the red, we will make you whole for this project or event. I know that when we had this conversation with our city staff, absent the Fourth of July Committee, we would have to dedicate staff resources that are also working on centennial preparation. So it will be putting a strain on them. And I appreciate that all of, that the council, what I'm hearing, the consensus is that it's not a big show or carnival or anything like that. But at the same time, it will take some, some resources from our public works staff to like fence off some of the, 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 the area so the people can barbecue and, and the vendor can set up the display show at some time in the day and, and some effort from our recreation department. So with, with that, I, I would like to get direction. What's the threshold that you will feel comfortable with us securing for a vendor? Because we know that time is of the essence. So sooner the better, at least for this kind of event.
Councilmember King, you have a question?
Yeah, I got a question for Councilmember Soto. In the past, I know you were involved in this. How much would a 30-minute show cost? Do you have an idea?
It's not necessarily the, the amount of time that they put in, it's the-
No, I'm talking about the fireworks. How much would that cost to purchase like a 30-minute show?
In the past, something like that would be about roughly 35. 35 to 50,000 is what we've had provided to our pyrotecs to have a fireworks display for the city of Livingston. However, back in those days, it was because we were the biggest show in the valley. At this point, a $10,000 show would be okay, but 15,000 would be sufficient to put a decent show to coordinate with a company.
I'm okay with that number too, 15,000.
I'm okay with that as well. And like, I think, I think we all understand, obviously it's time-sensitive but also strain that could potentially be on our department. So I don't think we're asking for, like I said, a carnival or full-on, you know, party or whatever you wanna call it.
You're correct, Mayor.
Yeah.
As part of trying to be behind the scenes on this project, we're not going full-blown as in the past. It took up a lot of time and energy with the least amount of volunteerism from our community. But it was a great turnout every single year. And the funds did come in along the way to pay and reimburse and give a big portion of that and pay for the, the vendors and the carnival paid for itself and the entertainment. So this year, just wanna reiterate that it is just going to be a fireworks show, should we secure funding for that. And we can work on some other discussions if there's going to be a few vendors that we wanna invite. Again, those were, that, those are gonna be separate, but for right now, as a fireworks, I don't even wanna, there is no committee. It's a work done by at least three people maybe that would help organize and to work out some of the details, location. But the first item would be-
The funding.
-getting the funding so that we can actually have a show. So if that is the direction, I mean, that is okay with the council, that's, I'm putting it out there for that budgeted item, to, to budget that item.
Okay. And I think, I think there'll be-
And another thing, I'm sorry. We will also be asking for sponsorships and donations. Again, we're not letting that, we're not gonna try to, to make this a full-funded event on the city's portion. We will be out there asking for donations and sponsorships from members of the community and others, resources that we've worked with in the past. So it's, hopefully we can offset the cost of the fireworks.
Perfect. And I think there's, there's a lot of people, I think, willing to volunteer and help out. I'm willing to help out in any way possible. I know you guys, the Fourth of July Committee operated and with the, it was a small group of you guys that made it happen. It was like three or four members that were able to make that happen. So I know that's, it's possible. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I would just wondering, maybe this is for legal. And since we're looking at direction, is this something that, that, because I, I, up to a certain point, I do wanna hear from the departments that might end up getting involved and, and see what, you know, like in this case, Public Works is here, Recreation is here, PD's not here. I don't know if Chief's on, on the phone, but I would like to kinda hear a little bit and, and so to be able to provide further direction from myself, from my point of view, would that be okay? I'm saying yes.
Yes.
Okay. So if, if, if we can have, I would like to ask the departments to kinda provide some feedback on, on how, you know, because up to a certain point, to me, you know, the, the amount being considered for the fireworks is one thing, but also I, I, you know, it's, it takes more than just the fireworks. It's gonna take, over time, it's gonna take resources from the city. So it's not just gonna be $15,000 that we need to consider here, but rather everything else that is gonna include to put something like this together. And, and I think it's only fair to be able to consider that, at least from my point of view. So wondering if the departments have input or from your, your point of view. Go ahead, Vanessa.
No, I was going to say, Councilmember Moran, that yeah, nor, I mean, Jackie and Tony, they've been here in the city for a very long time. So they are very much the holders of the, the, the resources and that historical knowledge. So when we did have a conversation on, on this project, they, they were able to share some insight on the amount of the, the time that it takes, not just during the event, but prior to the event. And, and, and you're correct. I mean, like, the vendor for the fireworks show is one cost, but we, we would also be accounting for the cost that it will be taking to our staff to, to, to make this happen. And I will definitely provide that, that estimate and breakdown. And I will definitely provide that, that estimate and breakdown when we bring this item forward. But I would let them share their historical expertise on what the fireworks in yesteryears.
I have to laugh because this, just a show is something that our department has wanted for twelve years, maybe? Just a show and not all the other stuff that goes with it. And so I know that the community will be happy that they're having something. I, you know, thank goodness, we've had Julio, which I actually talked to this week. And he said if he didn't have to fundraise, that he would be happy to help in any way that he can. I know that there's no way that I can fundraise anymore. People run when they come near me because they know I'm going to ask them for money. Right, Tom? Anyway. It is a lot of work. I mean, the things to think about would be porta potties. It, I saw, I mean, if we have the fifteen thousand dollar show, then we have the porta potties. If, depending on if we have it downtown or whether we keep it at Max Foster, there's still going to be traffic control that we're going to need overtime for the PD because it is a holiday, you know?
Public Works for barricades, road closures. Depending on, like she said, in porta potties, we usually staff our all-call staff for cleaning restrooms, volunteers help out as well. But most of it will also be trying to, depending on if we're going to use that lot where we have a parking lot, we need to water it down before the event so we don't create a...
Well, in the past, we actually have had to not leave that for parking, but then we have to get permission from the landowner that's the twenty-five acres on the other side, closer to the freeway from where we launched the fireworks. And so that needs to get going right away if we need to get permission for that. So I know that too, somebody had said that they had talked to the fireworks people and they're on board. And Julio told me that they never even got back to him. So it would be, we need to, if we're going to do it. The other thing I was thinking is maybe if we combine the effort for, because I had budgeted the ten thousand dollars for a show for the Sweet Potato Festival, is that maybe they'll give us some kind of a break for having two shows that are smaller. I mean, I don't know, we can try. But I am, I, I do have a much-needed vacation planned since COVID. My husband's ready to kill me because I'm gone all the time. So, you know, for the sake of holy matrimony, I will not be here from the first to the fifteenth of July. And so that just leaves Tony, and we have soccer coming up, and we're still getting ready for the Sweet Potato Festival. And the time capsule event for, you know, I mean, we just have a lot of stuff going. So there might be a few prep things that we can help do.
Yeah, but I think our, yeah, our expectation, we're not having a, you know, we don't want a festival or anything like that. So the, I mean, we're hoping for minimal participation. I mean, from recrea, recreation, obviously, set up for a road and, and PD and, and fire and all, like I said. But at least my expectation would be the least work for you guys as possible. We just want a simple fireworks show. Because I understand it's a busy year, it was a centennial. So my, you know, my expectation's not that recreation's going to be out there asking for donations or anything like that. I don't want to give you additional work. But obviously, we've been doing it for a very long time, so we're experts in the setup, at least part of it, you know? We set up, you know, be prepared for road closures if needed, traffic. But we've been doing it for a long time, so I think we know what to do and how to move forward if we, if we do decide to do it. But like I said, if Julio and a few other people are willing to help out, you know, I think it, it's possible. I think we could totally do it. I mean, we've been doing it for a long time, so... Vanessa, any other? Do you think you have enough direction?
I need a nod from everyone.
Oh, okay.
Like, from council.
Councilmember King. What are, you're good? He's good. Councilmember Jose?
At this point, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it would be great to have all of that information so that we can further discuss it and bring it all together and...
Councilmember Maria Soto?
Once we know that if we've got the item financially secured, we can put everything else into place. I've been working with Julio in the meantime and recently. So we can work on what council would like.
And, yeah, I'm definitely advocating for a show. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So we're going to go ahead and move on to... We're going to take it out for public comment. Does anybody have any public comment on this? Anybody on the phone? Okay, we're going to bring him back, and so we've got direction. So looking forward to having further discussion and making this happen for the community. Item number fifteen, discussion and direction on assigning council to an ad hoc committee for fireworks ordinance update. So I know during our special meeting, we had an item regarding a fireworks ordinance update. So I know we came to the conclusion that'll be beneficial to come, uh, put together an ad hoc committee of two council members to work with our departments, fire, PD, everybody that, you know, is affected, to be able to come up with a recommendation to bring to council if so does that our committee thinks it's necessary to update our ordinance. It is a ordinance change that would require a public hearing process. We did discuss that, obviously, the Fourth of July is around the corner. It would, probably wouldn't take effect on, for this Fourth of July. We discussed that it was still important to, to be proactive and, and send education out, maybe in our utility bills, for example, in regards to fireworks safety and ordinance. So still be proactive and, and at the same time, work with this ad hoc committee for an ordinance update in the future. So today, we'll be discussing the committee, how to put it together, who volunteers. I know during the last council meeting, during our special meeting, Councilmember Jose Moran volunteered to be part of this committee. So any other information that I missed? No?
No.
Perfect.
I need direction from council to form this committee.
So Jose, Councilmember Jose Moran, you still interested in this, be part of this ad hoc committee?
Yes, I'm still interested in, so besides two council members, do we have an idea, like, how many, how many members besides staff do we have? Are we considering residents or what would be the, the makeup of the committee?
Go ahead.
Normally, an ad hoc committee, it's a working group. And it's, it's comprised of the staff members and the council members so we can work together, get a recommendation back to the council.
So it's, yeah, it's, as far as I understand it in other ad hoc committees, yeah, it's a two-council member committee which seek participation from the departments to work. Is it, Tom? Is that correct, Legley? So we have one volunteer. Any other council member want to participate in this ad hoc committee? So I think, I heard Rol Garcia volunteering. Is that right?
I think at this point, you can volunteer or voluntold.
Yeah, so, no, I'll, I'll partake. I'll be part of the committee. I don't want to put it on Garcia. I don't know what his schedule's like or if he has anything going on, so I won't, I won't do that. But I'll participate. Okay, so we're bringing it out for public comment. Anybody have any comments on this item? All right, we'll bring it back to council. So it sounds like we have two volunteers for our ad hoc committee regarding the fireworks ordinance update. And we'll get together and move forward in regards to scheduling the meeting, what our goals will be, and what are we set to accomplish and reach out to the departments. So it, our committee is a short committee where it's tasked for something very specific, which in this case is the ordinance change or update. So that's going to be the target of this committee. So we'll stay in contact. All right, we're going to move on to item number sixteen. Discussion and direction to assign council to an ad hoc committee for homelessness. So this is another committee that actually was brought up or talked about months ago. I know there were been, there were efforts made to, you know, address, address the situation. I mean, we, I think countywide, it's, it's something that other jurisdictions are trying to address and, and tackle. I know there was efforts made with, in collaboration with like the Sheriff's Department. I know Garcia was out there and by the river and, and making those efforts and outreach with different agencies. Caltrans were also recently around here last week. So there's a lot of going on, a lot of efforts being made. Last time, we had talked about putting something together, a plan, a vision of how to better use the resources together with other jurisdictions or county and, and bring some recommendation to council to move forward with that, those efforts. But we were never, I, I think we never followed, really followed up formally for this. I know Garcia has been staying in communication with the county and some agencies, you know, advocating for them to come out here and, and, and address that issue, so... So this is just a formal, same thing, formal process of having an ad hoc committee to really work, you know, come up with a plan or a guide to where, where the city should address some of the issues regarding homelessness in, in, in the city. So on this one, I am going to volunteer Garcia to participate because he has been involved in that.
I'll volunteer as well.
Okay, so we have Mayor Pretem Garcia and Councilwoman Soto for this ad hoc committee. And once again, this is just a specific committee of two council members that were, that are going to target or address homelessness and, and come, come back to council with a working plan. I'll take it out to the public.
Just in case Garcia can't do it, I'll be the backup.
Okay, sounds good. We'll take it out for public comment. Anybody? All right, we'll bring it back to council and Vanessa?
Yes, Mayor, just so I can understand what is the purpose of our ad hoc committee that we're creating here? We are targeting homelessness and we would like your, what is your, what is the, the goal for this plan or guide on how the city should address issues? That's what I wrote here.
So, yeah, so like the conversation during one of the council meetings we had was presented to us that they had gone out to the riverfront with different agencies, the Sheriff's Department, provided resources, offered vouchers, stuff like that. So we, during that discussion was, you know, was brought up that the city should have a better understanding of what the issue is, of, of understanding what kind of resources the city could provide or partner with agencies. So I think the vision for this committee would be coming up with a... like a, a, a plan or a document perhaps, or, or something the city could actually, actually do in regards to addressing this issue. Maybe putting more resource towards vouchers, more resource, more partnership with county agencies. You know, more outreach, maybe start establishing nonprofit or whatever the case may be. So it's just, it's, it's very, it's hard to really put a specific goal. I think it's more just understanding the whole issue of homelessness, what specifically is happening in Livingston, and to better help the situation.
Okay, since we're, our committee needs to have a, a specific target or goal, would you, would you say that potentially providing or bringing back to the council an educational presentation with resource to understand the issue and what are the resources available?
And have an action plan.
And, okay, understand the issues, have resources available, and maybe at that point, some recommendations as far as an action plan? Just because action plans would potentially require funding to make the, make that happen? And we, we will bring at that point those recommendations?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and move on to council direction on future agenda items. Does anybody have any future agenda items? I know that I, I, I am working on, like I said, the time capsule item, street renaming item. I know I've, I've talked to Legal about this. And I know there's a few other items regarding the tobacco issue that we're working on that we, we worked on also by our attorney's office. So there's a few items that'll be coming forward. Anything else, council?
Yes, I would like to, for staff to, and I can help with that, bring in to council sometime soon in regards, an item regarding the, what I mentioned earlier and the presentation just happened to kind of connect with it, the residential lawn replacement program. And one of the organizations that can help, that can help with that program is SelfHelp. So, and I know that we had other programs running or working with them. So it's already, it's already someone that, that we know and that we have worked with. And they, they have a program that's called the Residential Lawn Replacement Program, which basically pays to replace the lawn and not use water or, or very minimal water, which will help the city in the long run. But it's called the Residential Lawn Replacement Program.
Thank you. And then I, I know our, I know there's probably some budget workshops coming up soon, right?
That is correct. We are preparing for budget.
All right, so at this time, we're going to go ahead and adjourn our meeting at nine oh nine. Oh, no, we're going to go into closed session now.